Yep. Okay, you ready Jeff? Are you ready Colleen?
I'm ready.
Okay, we're going to call it order. City Council, our session Tuesday, October 29th. First item is equivalent of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, only one thing on the agenda and that's our four dune management deliberations. So Jeff, you want to bring us up to speed?
Sure. So we met the last meeting and you gave direction to change to a conditional use permitting process through what we would call preservation grading activities. And so I took your recommendations from that and redrafted each of the different documents in a clean version and also marked up version. And so I presented those in three new documents, the comprehensive plan, clean markup, zoning ordinance amendments, clean markup, and the four dune management plan revised version in a clean markup edition. Each one of those, I kind of broke it down into the main things that I heard in our discussion from the last meeting. And that included really getting rid of any kind of grading for views, also putting limitations upon 2,500 cubic yards on how much could be actually done in one permitting cycle. That one permitting cycle is only for one year time period. And it was really built around this idea that this preservation grading would be done for really blowouts of a dune, erosion of a dune, or maintain public access to that dune through the dune systems. And so questions kind of bounded over whether we might need a four dune management plan as part of that, if you're just doing that type of work. My understanding from what we heard from the state and from Bill is that if we're going to allow any kind of grading in the four dunes, then we should have a four dune management plan as part of that. And so it doesn't have to be anything extensive, but it should be a four dune management plan that speaks to those kind of things. And so what I've tried to do with that then is put those three new documents considering that recommendation from the state and Bill, and then put that into what you have before you. And so I don't know how you guys would like to work through these tonight, but we could just go from comprehensive plans and just go through the three in succession. I can at least kind of step you through in how I change those and then leave it up to you guys how you want to do that.
Bill's not going to be here tonight.
He's not, no.
He didn't want to talk to me, huh?
No.
Because I'm not giving up on that. I don't think we need a four dune management plan, but I'll take that up with him.
Sure, yeah.
And my concern is this. We'll have a comprehensive plan that will follow the guidelines of Goal 18. We'll then have an ordinance that incorporates the rules of our comprehensive plan and Goal 18. And we're not going to do any grading for view or grading to some nonsensically prevent inundation. And when I read through this, it just says you don't need it.
Yeah.
But if we do do, everybody prevails on the, you do a dune management plan, I guess my recommendation is we don't address that at all until we lock down our comprehensive plan language and our ordinance language. And then go through and put this dune management plan together that mirrors exactly the word for word that are in those other ordinances.
Right.
We have different terminology, different words for the same thing. It just opens it up for argument down the road.
I agree, yeah. And I've tried to, Mike, I've tried to do the best I could considering what you just said, trying to align the three different documents at least as it stands now, so.
I think you did a pretty good job.
I think we should have a four dune management plan because I kind of look at it as a user's manual for people who are interested in what our laws are regarding dune grading. So they have it all in one place. They don't have to wander through a comprehensive plan. They don't have to wander through the zoning ordinance. They have it right there. It tells what our intent is, what our reasoning is, what the ordinance says, what they can do, what they can't do, what they need to consider. And I think it's just kind of a nice little, it's a plan for all of us to be able to follow, to know where we are without having to go through both the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So I kind of almost look at it as a user's manual.
Okay.
It's a user's manual, but didn't have the authority or the power of the ordinance.
Right, right. Just the plan.
But it helps guide what the ordinance is because that's kind of the policy that we will design. So I agree with Nancy. I think it's something that we need to retain the ability to do and have a, I'm having a little trouble with the concept of a four dune because we don't technically have the true four dunes. And I think it should be an entire dune management plan rather than just four dune. That is a term that seems to be specific to something that's highlighted in the science. Doesn't quite fit our, anyhow, I think we need a dune management plan. I keep trying to find this one text here.
Sam, do you mind if I ask a question of Mike? Is your concern, Mike, that it's just an extra bureaucratic layer? Or is that the four dune management plan is actually not necessary at all?
Both.
Okay.
But certainly an extra layer of bureaucracy that in my view doesn't add anything beyond the ordinance. And the ordinance, you don't even have to go back to the comprehensive plan because the ordinance will be based on that. That will give all the rules of what you can and can't do, the permitted and conditional uses. And since we're kind of down to only two of those, one is remedial grading to remove sand that's inundated the structure. And the other is the reparative or preservation grading that is only to repair dunes after a storm that's caused flooding or blow through or overtopping or erosion that has created a public hazard to public life or buildings or property. So those two, it hardly seems to warrant a full-blown dune management plan. As soon as we get into that, then we've got to shuffling back and forth from this one to this one to this one, make sure that they're all consistent. So it's a little of both, but it's, and let me just go through why I said what I said. Go to the Goal 18. Point seven, it just says grading or sand movement necessary to maintain views or to prevent sand inundation may be allowed for structures in sand dune areas only if the area is committed to development within acknowledged or growth area and an old part of an overall plan for managing dune grading. If we do have a dune management plan, it will not include grading for views. So it seems nonsensical, maybe to have a full-blown report or plan that's only required if you're going to allow grading for views or preventing sand inundation. Frankly, I don't know how you prevent sand inundation. So it's a requirement for something that we're not going to have. I mean, that's kind of the technical view I have. I understand what Sam and Nancy are saying, that if we're going to allow even the emergency grading or preservation grading, there is rules for that, but that is in the ordinance.
Well, my suspicion is that because Bill has recommended it, it's because he's an land use attorney, and there's probably something else involved looking down the road.
That's why I was hoping it was here, because I asked him directly and he didn't give me anything other than the OR.
Mm-hmm.
Because it says OR. But OR is for prevention of sand inundation. That was the OR he's talking about. And we're not doing anything to grade somehow prevent sand inundation. Grading to remove sand that has inundated a building, that's covered in the remedial grading, which is another section. So anyway, that's my reasons.
Don't see the harm in having it, but I also don't see the necessity to, that we can certainly go through the con plan and the city ordinance part of it.
Yeah. And I think we're in pretty good shape on that. That's why I recommend that we get that really buttoned up where we're comfortable with it. And then if our land use attorney continues to insist that we need a dune management plan and we merely pull the excerpt out from that and, you know, get into the weeds on planting of grasses and all that sort of thing, so. That's all I've got to say right now.
I'm sorry it took so long, but.
No, but it is. It's a bureaucratic redundancy that I just don't think is necessary.
I can see both sides of it. I'm not sold one way or the other, but I really would like to hear Bill expound on it a little bit more. Is it possible, Jeff, that we could get some type of written clarification on it?
Yeah, sure can.
Okay.
Okay, we'll put that on the shelf for a little while and come back to it, I bet.
Yeah.
Does the council have any place they would like to start so we can go through these? Or?
I'm comfortable with how they're listed in.
Okay, so you want to start with the?
Is there any point in starting with the cover letter?
Yeah, the points of consideration.
Points of consideration. There's a few corrections I would make on that, but I don't know that it's going to be. The very first document, the summary and background, Jeff's kind of Stafford.
Okay, start there.
Can I make one correction? And that is, it's the one, two, three, third line up on page two. And it says council supports the 12-inch depth limit. It should be centimeters.
Yeah, I think Jeff picked that up somewhere else.
It's down on D as well.
Yeah, it shows up in two different places.
Yeah, I see it.
Next line down has the same thing. The only other comment I have on that page deals with what we just talked about. We'll put that off.
Okay. Anybody else on the first document? Okay, so we move down to the construction, sand dune construction policies.
Comprehensive plan.
Is that what it is? Yeah.
Okay.
I have several comments I'd like to make here, but I've got to decipher my notes, so give me a second. The first paragraph. I'm still kind of hung up with the four dune, the fact that it's, in our situation, I went up and down our beach quite a bit. And I can't think of any one spot where a breach would happen that would be under the term breaching that I understand it. But I couldn't come up with anything else that fits the concept of that paragraph other than if the dunes, that didn't even work, temporary basis of an emergency, for whatever reason, the spills and the flooding and restoration should be possible, I guess. I don't know. So that one, that one I have a little bit of a.
Are you talking about six?
Yeah, six, the first paragraph.
The way I read that was that you could bulldoze through the sand dunes, the four dunes, the four slope, whatever you want to call it, in order to deal with an emergency or et cetera. But when you were finished, you had to restore it to its original shape.
Yeah, that's the way I read it too. I was just, the terminology was weird. So the dunes could be accessed only on a temporary basis in an emergency. Just kind of making it, you know, if there was an oil spill and we needed to get trucks down there and that was the best way to do it, do it. But it does say that we reestablish and restoreate, you know, and that's all. The concept is correct, I've just messed with the terminology. The second paragraph. I was curious. Committed to development or is it in an acknowledged urban growth boundary? I went and looked at the map, so we don't have anywhere that a beach will actually be within an urban growth boundary anytime in the future.
Isn't that just language that mirrors Goal 18?
Yeah, yeah.
It all comes right out of Goal 18.
Okay, well, that's the reason it's there. That's kind of okay, but it seems like redundant, I mean, not redundant, but moot terminology.
Can I?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, grading or sand movement necessary, I'd like to see to prevent sand inundation taken out. Grading or sand movement necessary, sand movement may be allowed for structures. Grading or sand movement may be allowed for structures in four dune areas only.
You want to say for structures, inundated structures?
Yeah, I don't understand. To maintain views or to prevent sand inundation. I don't think it should be preventative work. I think it should be after the fact.
But allowed for removal of sand from structures inundated by sand.
Isn't that remedial?
No.
That is, well, that is remedial. But that's one of the allowed grading.
Yeah, so.
This is the general.
I don't like the word prevent.
Yeah, I think prevent is, to me, doesn't make sense there.
It sounds proactive instead of being after the fact, which I think any of the grading that we would like to see happen would be after it appears to be causing a problem.
Basically to remove sand inundated from a building that's been inundated with sand.
I think I can.
Not to prevent it from being inundated, it's to remove it after it's already happened. Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think something more in line with grading or sand movement necessary, like I had put for, here's the language I put, grading or sand movement necessary to repair blowouts, erosion, or provide public access may be allowed for access, may be allowed, and then, let me see. Yeah, for structures. So I just inserted, you know, grading or sand movement necessary to repair blowouts, erosion, and provide public access in there.
And public access to the building, is that what you mean?
Or public access to the beach.
I guess one way to.
From where?
Address this would be use the same language we have for remedial grading.
Yeah.
And language we have for preservation grading.
Preservation. Just put those two together.
So we don't have kind of two different kinds of definitions.
It doesn't really say that, but I mean, say in here, but we would want to be able to consider putting vegetation in to help prevent, wouldn't we? I mean, I understand where you're coming from about not moving sand as a barrier system, but what about vegetation?
Keep that thought in mind when we get to the vegetation.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want this to negate that. Yeah, I don't think it does, but.
No, I don't think it does.
Okay.
Okay.
The other, this paragraph is a real challenging paragraph because the OM zone includes residential lots, quite a few of them. So there are situations where this kind of covers some of that, those lots. And that's why the development and structure is in there.
That's why we explain it more thoroughly in the ordinance.
Yeah, you'd have to.
What you can do, right.
Okay.
I think, and I think we can take another look. Jeff, on still the same page, four dune management policies. Again, I like to call it four dune management policies. What was bothering me is every section is called four dune management.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just make some suggestions in looking at what the text is with that paragraph. Like I'd change the first one to four dune breaching. The second one to grading for structures. The third one to four dune grading plan. Because then it kind of gives you, tells you what you're looking for. Next one would be four dune vegetation. And number five would be adaptive management policy. And six would be four dune management objectives, or just four dune, yeah, management objectives. And seven would be four dune management standards. And then it, that same terminology is found in the text that follows.
Okay.
Let me just add a little bit to what Mike was saying. On number three, the way I was reading that is it seems like a heading for another set of listings. And I would, second line in number three, shoreline to be managed, including, semicolon, sources of sand, ocean flooding, and patterns of accretion. Otherwise, it doesn't quite read right.
Say that again.
Okay, number? Four dune management policies, number three, second line, towards the end of the line, stability of the shore dune management, shoreline to be managed, including, semicolon, sources of sand, ocean flooding, and patterns of accretion and erosion. Otherwise, what I'm looking for as soon as I read that sentence is bullet points after it, and they're not there. So it makes four to 12 seem like they're listings of number three, which they are.
Yeah, I think I would also strike that and before patterns. So it would be sources of sand, ocean flooding, patterns of accretion, and erosion.
Yeah.
And effects of, you know, because I think there's too many continuing ands there.
I just cleaning up the paragraph. Actually, it's one sentence, so.
You could address it rather than bullet points, just with a colon with the items following.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else on the page one there? I noticed that number one and number two are basically repeating the comments of the top of the page, first two paragraphs. So if there's any changes made at the top of the page, they should be made in number one and number two. I'm going to go to page, the second page, number eight. Grated sand must be retained within the littoral system and priorities for dispersal if movement of sand is prescribed in the four dune management plan. Could that include the science somehow so that we have a reference to the how and why? Or if this is not the right place for it, if it's noted in the ordinances somehow?
I was going to suggest just put a period after system. Grated sand must be retained within the littoral system. Because we're going to have other places where we're going to address the dispersal and all that.
Okay, all that, good. Makes it real simple.
Okay.
Okay.
Also jumping up to six. The four dune management is founded on four important objectives. First, to ensure the dune sustain an adequate sand volume in order to withstand the erosional effects of extreme storm and minimize any potential for wave overtopping, inundation, flooding. And second, to strengthen weak points. That seems pretty subjective because who's going to determine what a weak point is and what isn't?
I think you probably determine it after the fact.
That's what I'm hoping, yeah, not before.
Yeah, because I think it's that next clause, by repairing areas subject to be localized, blowouts from wind or waves.
And then the word prevents there. And I don't like that either. It just sounds like you're trying to do stuff ahead of time instead of after the fact. So I was hoping that that could be reworded to reflect that.
I think basically that's just explaining why you're repairing it. You're repairing it so that it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, so I'll try to phrase it a little differently so it doesn't, I understand what you're trying to get at. You don't want it to be as much preventive as if you repaired it, you want it to prevent any rehappening or something, the recurrence.
Yeah, and that one also, because it says dune buffer, the idea of maintaining the dunes, like the vegetation again, might be necessary, so I wouldn't want to say no on that one. To prevent the dune buffer from weakening. So if, you know, the grass was dying or something.
Can you just restore the dune buffer? To restore the dune buffer?
Yeah, might be a way to address it.
Okay, I have another one down on 10. Last sentence. The planning commission shall evaluate its dune management program two and five years after adoption. Is that it? Two and five years?
I think in the actual, I would say that at this level, I would say planning commission shall evaluate its dune management program and get rid of the two, five, you know.
There should be a time though.
Yeah, it will be, but it shouldn't be specified in the comprehensive plan. It should be specified down at the zoning ordinance level.
Okay, if it was-
And I think I have tried to do that in the zoning ordinance when we get there, and, but I'll take the, that specifics out of that right there.
Yeah, okay.
On nine, it just kind of looked to me like that, that's just one sentence. Probably that belongs in four, which is four dune vegetation.
Okay.
And just move it up there.
Just put that up there.
Conditional sentence.
Okay.
So on what was 11, but now is 10. Four dune monitoring of a conditional use four dune grading permit is mandatory. Monitoring shall be the responsibility of the permit holder. I think it means that the permit holder should be paying for it and that it should be monitored by an independent party.
Yeah, that is covered elsewhere, but it would be helpful to-
Yeah.
Expand it for that same reason.
Changed it from 11 to 10.
On number 12, not the revised number 12, number 12 expanded here. The second line down, it talks about grading activities permitted under active preservation grading, conditional use permit, and then you say, or remedial grading development permit. I wonder if that isn't three different things? Is it preservation grading, conditional use permit, comma, a remedial grading permit, or a development permit? We have this whole section on development somewhere.
So now the, the development permit is what you would get for that remedial grading, yeah?
Okay, that was a question.
It's just an administrative permit.
All right.
Why would the word, why is the word development?
That's just what we call all administrative, just a development.
Can we take it out in this regard? I know you're a development manager, but in this case, I think that it incur, in first, that it has to do with development, which I don't think is-
Yeah, that's no problem, that's-
Just call it a remedial grading permit.
Yeah.
Okay, 13 and 14?
Oh, the second bullet point, grading or sand removal, how many accesses do we have?
I don't know.
Can we find out?
Yeah.
Because I think it's really important, I may have mentioned this before, but in surf lines, they have paths going from each one of their houses out to the beach, and I would hate to see just accesses in general. I'd like to be more specific about which ones they are.
I know the city has a little over 40.
Forty, and are they mostly road access?
Yeah, most of them are related to a road.
Is there something like that?
Karen has a map that lines them all out.
Can we refer to the map?
Yeah, we could put an exhibit together.
And I'd like to see it properly before we agree to it, but that would be really helpful.
Yeah, you could pretty much say grading or sand removal to maintain-
Public access.
Public, yeah, public access routes, or established access routes, and then refer to a, the map. And I'm sure that map is already, I know it's in the parks.
Isn't it in the parks?
Yeah.
Master plan?
Comfortable with those, Jeff?
Yeah.
Next part is the-
Wait a minute.
Go ahead, I'm trying to-
On 13, again, it refers to a monitoring report after the fifth year following adoption of the management plan. And previously, we talked about monitoring after two or five years. This is basically, says after five years, the planning commission of the city should take a look and say, is this working?
Yeah.
I think that's what you mean.
Yeah, it is. This is the city's own kind of report, yeah.
All right, I'm finding that.
And should there be a list of what the content of that report should include?
I think it should be, but it should be in the either-
In the ordinance.
Yeah, in the ordinance or the plan, you know, where it should, I don't think it should be at the comp plan level.
Okay.
I did have one more, I just realized my notes are weird. On number 14, it refers to clearing of sand necessary to maintain the function and structure of, and is permitted in the Cana Beach littoral cell. Shouldn't that be the OM zone? Because the littoral cell-
Yeah, that's fine.
Kind of generic.
Point, yeah.
And what we're looking at here is just the zone, which would include the littoral cell.
But this is a comprehensive plan, not the overlay zone. Does that make a difference?
I'd-
Is that a bill question?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay.
I would add one more bullet point.
Okay.
Point 15, which now might be 14. 14 talks about remedial dune grading and defines it. I would put 15, preservation, grading, grading the dune for slope to repair storm damage from wave overtopping, flooding, erosion that poses a hazard to life property, et cetera. Just address bullet.
Okay, yeah, makes sense, yeah.
Good idea.
Okay, let's go to the next section. I'll find it here. Which is the oceanfront management overlay zone.
And this is basically the same thing as we just had.
True, but it gets into a little more details here. It's referencing zoning points. I guess I have one, but it's on page two, D, down at the bottom of the page. For lots that do not consist of a beach, active dunes or other four dunes which are conditionally stable, not subject to overcutting.
Where are you?
Page two, number D, or letter D, down at the bottom of the page.
Which is 1742030 and then D.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, where's your B? I don't know.
Yeah, D, right.
It's in the zoning ordinance amendments?
Yeah, zoning ordinance amendments, 1742030, uses and activities permitted, and then down at D.
Okay, right there. Essentially, the first chunk of this, A, B, and C, for lots that consist of beach and dunes. And then in D, E, and F are those that do not consist of beach and dunes. And I was just curious, more than anything else, where are those lots in the OM zone? I went through it and looked at it on the-
There are some that are not on, you know, like up north, there are some that are over on the other side of the streets of-
Of Oak Street?
Yeah, and, and so they would not be in that kind of beach or active dune area, but they would be on the other side of the street, and some of them, you know, I guess if the sand were pushed all the way across the others, and then across the street, it could, it could be caused remedial, you know, that's where I guess.
This happened in the past.
It has, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious because-
It was at my mom's house.
Seems like a lot of text or just a few houses.
Yeah.
Down the south end.
I know the challenge would be moving the zone line, which is not worth doing, but I just was curious.
Along those lines, when we were on the planning commission, Sam, the property that's to the west of the oceanfront street on the presidential, is actually not public, I don't know what to call it, but aren't they separate lots that you can't build on?
I mean, you're thinking down the sand, west of Ocean?
Along the presidential streets, say around Adam Street and farther south?
They're in the OM zone.
Okay.
Yeah. But it only goes one lot in. That's where the line kind of is.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are a couple of them that were actually a lot oceanfront, maybe they'd been subdivided at some point, they're still in that zone.
Yeah.
It's a separate lot set back from the oceanfront, but still subject to the overlay zone.
I guess I'm referring to like, say, the property that Bud Stevens wanted to build on and back.
Oh, yeah.
That strip of property that runs up, does this have anything to do with that?
Well, it's in the OM zone, so I guess it would. But they fit within the A, B, and C sections.
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
No, I was great.
Good question.
Something that came up and it's, came up in a discussion I had with somebody else about not just dune management, but the part of Alan's report on how to manage some of the sand is the term woody material. And it's not really referred to in any of the zoning comments in here. I don't know if that's something that would be further down in the weeds and stuff, as a tool for building dunes if we ever did want to try, like down in Tolavana where they don't have any.
Mm-hmm.
It's something we didn't discuss during the phases. I did come in, crossed it a couple times in some of the letters that were sent in, people referring to Alan's report about the grass, and at the very end, it's always "and woody material."
It's here on page 13.
Of the ordinances?
Four dune management.
The plan.
Oh, the plan.
And it has a list of the plan.
Okay, hang on, I'm going to go find it.
Is that what you were?
Seems like I'm behind page 14.
Or 13, sorry. Secondary stabilization.
That seems specific to vegetation. Discussion, woody materials means driftwood.
Like below?
Driftwood, or fences that are used to catch, catch the sand and put it where you want it, kind of thing.
Doesn't this get addressed in, I guess it's on page six of this section, 1742060, six folders. Here it addresses the specifics for preservation grading, and there it gets down, this would be when you're repairing after an erosion or overtopping, flooding, whatever. It specifies the height, the amount of sand we've moved, goes on, identifies, you know, identifies, set up priorities for low and narrow dune areas that need to be built up, drive standards for temporary measures, cumulative volume of the proposed grading, and we go on, it gets into the, I guess not in that section, but goes on to address the revegetation. Looks to me like there, it's recognizing that we may have a situation where you got to, in repairing, you've got to build this back up to its original, and anytime you do grading, there's another section on revegetation, and talks about slope and so forth. I think it's covered there with our ordinance.
Well, I know that the Allen Plan, if we, if we reference the Allen Plan as the science, it does talk about being able to use woody material for sand capture. But we just didn't have that anywhere within the zoning text as a tool to use. Whether it needs to be there or not, I don't know. I mean, it does say here revegetation, like Mike is saying, or set priorities for low and dunes. But having a, a space where there is no dune to be breached, wouldn't it be a part of a concept to start building one? I don't know. But I think that should be available to use in the future if it needs to be.
I think this section does. It tells you, then you, like, under-
So I can say that on-
It's addressed in D.
On that note, you could put that, I mean, I would consider that under that, it's called H in the 174260, and you've got- that under that, it's called H in the seventeen forty-two sixty, and you've got three preservation grading, and then you've got A, B, C, down to H. H is the monitoring plan. Under the monitoring plan, there's where they would put erosion control measures, revegetation measures, or those types of things. We can specify, make it more specific there, but then whoever does these preservation grading, they're held to those four criteria, which are the proposed, achieves a balance of these four objectives, which are A, B, C, and D. And then the annual cumulative vol- volume of preservation grading does not exceed 2,500 cubic yards. Three, the preservation does not remove sand from the foredune system. And four, the preservation deposition area will not impact the joint properties. So, you know, I think that's where you would put the possibility of that, you know what I'm saying? If you're, if that's, that's what you're wanting to achieve.
Maybe an added point here, this is where it addresses who's responsible financially. It'll be a third-party, independent outside expert. But if you go to the next page, under, let's see, we're down to H, I, J, L. Looks like K can, oh, no, it's been marked out. I guess, I can't tell which letter that is. But it's on page eight. And it talks about the revegetation of graded areas is mandatory, and it can be accomplished with a combination of these various grasses. So it gives you that flexibility to use the latest, best technology, best practices. And that plan has to be submitted to the planning commission, where then there'd be public comment and hearing on, is that really the best way to go before it's approved? I, I don't know, I feel like it's really covered there.
Let's see what you're, I think what you're speaking to, Sam, we could put out, in that first sentence of that revegetation, though, is what, where you're talking about.
I suppose it does say, or another revegetation plan approved by the planning commission. That gives them the flexibility to go to Alan's report and say, oh, there is another option.
Yeah, because it says temporary erosion control measures shall be implemented.
I suppose. That's, that's just all, I'm...
I might, see if I might add just one thing right there.
So you're talking about putting, like, driftwood down?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's what is a way of collecting sand. The wind catches it in the, in the driftwood.
I'm gonna run with this a little bit. If the city puts it down, and there's an accident because someone sat on that log because the waves were overtopping it, like, the reason why they're doing it in the first place, would we be liable?
I don't know. Okay, let's build that one. But, you know...
Ashley, where are you?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if messing with it like that's a good idea.
But it's, it's a system that was in the, it was in the science, and I just thought, hey, you know, if in a chance some, sometime in the future, somebody wants to, or is needing to find a way to build sand quickly, that's one way to do it. And the fences work, fresh material, or driftwood.
All of those things are addressed in the science report and elsewhere.
It's in the science, so...
And if it has to go to the planning commission, and they have to present their plan and get approval, I think it gives the opportunities, planning commission, to ask those very questions and just create a liability for the city.
Yeah, okay.
Lost my place here. Okay? Does not realize. On, on that same page, page eight, number three, mentions it's, it's a pretty good blanket statement, "The preservation does not remove sand from the beach foredune system." That's understood. One of the concerns I ran into when I read that one was, in the remedial program, the sand must go back into the littoral system. But it doesn't really say that specifically. So how we put it back, I don't know if we were addressed that.
Okay.
Because we did talk about it, if there was a house about half buried in sand, where do you put that sand? And do you come to the city to get a permit to get, to be able to remove the sand, but you also need some sort of, kind of permit, or that permit explaining where you're gonna put it?
If that were to happen, that'd be an opportunity to truck that sand down to a place where they need it, as, as part of their plan.
And if, if that's possible, I don't know. Rather than shoving it to their border yard and just building a dune there.
Well, it, it says that on page nine, "Areas graded more than three feet in height shall be immediately replanted and fertilized. All graded sand must remain within the management area. Grated sand should be used to fill low dune areas within individual management units." And so I'm, I need to kind of refine that language anyhow, because we've gotten away from management unit areas. And so I'll clean that up, but keep what you're talking about in there.
Even if it's just putting it out to where the high dais can catch it, and let the, let nature do it, just so there is a method to do that. Could call, anybody else have any more?
Are you guys okay with my clarification on the remedial dune grading language on page eight, number four? I put remedial grading is the clearing of sand necessary to maintain the function of a residential commercial structure. Removal of sand that has built up against exterior walls, doors, or windows of a structure and that blocks access to a, to that structure qualifies as remedial grading. Landscaping and accessory structures such as fences and non-habitable outbuildings do not qualify for remedial grading.
Yes.
Yep. I'm a little iffy on the last part. Landscaping and accessory structures, that accessory structure could mean an accessory dwelling, you know, the small possibility there. And the fences, I don't know how many times I've seen the fences over by Washington, just get laid over by the sand. They act as a catch, so...
Aren't they supposed to be temporary? Fences not necessarily.
No, not certainly.
No, not if they're on their property.
But I don't think fences are, when it comes to remedial grading, that that's important. I think it's important for a house.
No, it is.
Or a condo.
Because, I mean, I mean, from what I've witnessed, at the end of Washington, there's three houses there that have fences. The first year, the sand will cover the fence. The second year, the sand's gonna cover the house. Not cover the house, but I mean, hit the house. So if you have some...
But that's preventative.
If you have some remedial during the first time to use the fence, you won't get it touching the house, and you'll have less sand moved every time.
I don't agree.
Okay.
I, I do agree with Sam, though. I think, I think that should be looked at.
Yeah, I think that's, to me, that's the clarification I want from you guys.
I agree. I don't want to equivocate about this, that you should be able to remove sand from a fence.
Any structure?
Now, I suppose if, it depends on what, what you're using this to define. If it's the thirty-five foot line, that becomes a challenge. So...
Up to thirty-five?
Yeah, are you saying any structure then, yeah, up to thirty-five feet? Any structure within thirty-five feet? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking about this. Because...
But that's really generous. It used to be twenty.
Was twen- don't we have twenty-five feet in, in here?
It should be thirty-five, is what you had discussed earlier.
We went back to thirty-five. It had gotten switched.
That's primarily for Breaker's Point, that's, I can't think of one oceanfront lot that has, well, I'm sure that it exists, but, and then here, most of them don't have thirty-five feet of oceanfront yard.
Probably not, I can't think of any. But I'm just thinking about Ocean, Ocean Avenue and Larch there, because that's where I go all the time. So if it was measured from the foundation of the structure, and it included the fence, the fence is included, but if you're measuring from the fence, that's probably not the best solution.
No, I don't agree with that at all.
So it should, yeah, in that sense, if that's what you're trying to define here is where it's measured from.
Thirty-five feet measured from the house.
From the house, garage, you know, a foundation structure. That makes sense. So if there is an accessory dwelling, and that accessory dwelling has a foundation, you measure from it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I'd put in there non-habitable outbuildings, but...
Okay. Hey, should've cut that, sorry.
Does every house on the beach have a foundation, though?
Oh, sure.
I know, that's the thing. That's, that's the thing. I, I mean, I live in a neighborhood, I'm the only house that has a foundation. But again, I'm not a beach neighborhood, but still...
There's fewer and fewer, but they do it.
So if you start counting the foundation of the house...
We, we can just put habitable structure.
Well, when it comes to bank financing, post and pure is considered a foundation.
Is it? Okay. But, yeah, I want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Okay, that was an interesting one, but, yeah, makes sense now.
So, you go to the next page, then we got all, all these different distances to address.
Yeah, we can just put thirty-five instead of that twenty, but I think that the rest of them are...
Okay.
I would change that one to, it's gonna be half the distance, so that's gonna be, you know, eighteen feet instead of ten feet at that one.
Okay.
So in A and C, oh, three.
Right, yes.
I'm on page ten now. Oh, on part F, says the impact of the program should be monitored, which we've covered several times, but for multi-year programs, an annual report, we're not gonna have any of it.
Right, right. Big catch, yeah.
I guess that, the impact of the program shall be monitored, for how long?
Well, it goes on to say for one-year program.
Yeah, this, this is for the, though, how, this is for the non-structural, non-structural shoreline stabilization program.
I guess...
Yeah, so... This is an under for the preservation.
Well, that's interesting. Down on D, on page nine, it says, "Where the placement of sand fences is proposed, evidence shall be provided by the planting of vegetation alone will not achieve the stated purpose. Fencing may be permitted on a temporary basis to protect vegetation that is being planted as part of the program, or to control the effects of pedestrian access." To me, that implies that the monitoring of the vegetation, at some point, it's catching or it's not. So, but how long?
What I like for these, going back to F, there, eliminating the multi-year program, you say that there could be a report at the completion, one year after the completion of the project, and that report should include the recommendations for any program modification, detailing the effects of the program.
Okay.
Are we done with this section, and want to move on to the next section?
I'm okay with that.
Yep. Robert?
Mm-hmm.
The next section is the current Kennedy Beach Dune Management Plan. I didn't really put any notes in here, because I was thinking, anything that we did in the policies and the zoning ordinances would be translated into this. But that brings us back to Mike's concern about actually having the Dune Management Plan.
We could ask Jeff to take these various suggestions we've made tonight, and walk through the Dune Management Plans, and we're still gonna have one, and make those same adjustments. And we could look at those the next time we get together, and maybe build a year. And we could look at those the next time we get together, and maybe Bill will be here.
Yeah.
Well, at the very least, have written something to us.
Yeah, I'll get you a written opinion from Bill on that, and then at the next one, you'll have the opportunity to, he'll be here, and then have, we'll review the plan if we need.
Okay. I guess, let me just clarify a little bit of my thinking on this, is that I see the policy from the comp plan as the generalized statement of how we wanna preserve the dunes. Then you go into the ordinances with the laws of how that is contained. And then I see the dune management plan as a reference of the best ways to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't mean that that's the way you have to do it, it's the best ways that we consider it, and that would include the Alan report and, uh, any other sciences that we find that works.
Right.
And then it has the graphics, like we have in here, that reference things visually that help. And maybe, maybe it's less, um, measurement-specific kind of stuff, 'cause that would be in the law part, the ordinances, and this is just more the descriptive.
Yeah.
That's how I see it.
So it becomes more of just a guideline, operating?
Operating guideline, and kinda defines how this council wants the dunes to be managed. This would be the most flexible for future councils, whereas the ordinances and then the comp plan are a lot harder to adjust.
Yeah.
That's just my vision of how this should work, between the three documents.
Okay.
You got marching orders?
I got it, yeah.
I'm hesitant to say we need to pick a date, but we've got, next week is our regular meeting, week after that is our work session, so the week after that, maybe, if the council wishes. That would be third week in November.
I'm not available week of it, beginning of...
Thanksgiving.
I guess it would be the eleventh.
It's the next.
The entire week, Nancy?
I can do it earlier in the day, I just can't do it after six o'clock.
Okay, but is the entire week, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that, we've got a meeting on the fifth, we've got a meeting on the twelfth.
So the nineteenth, the eighteenth, week of the eighteenth would be...
I could do that.
The third week.
When?
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth?
Pick a Tuesday, is that conflict with a meeting of any kind, Colleen?
I don't see any here, um, for the evening on Tuesday, the nineteenth. If you wanna have it at five-thirty on that Friday night.
Might as well.
Might as well. That gives Jeff some time. Okay?
So that's when this will begin?
Well, we can just keep talking about it until we don't.
Okay. Is that the nineteenth?
Nineteenth. I know that Bruce was talking about, there's, you know, some other work session items to come up, like the meeting of the chain, to go over the contract.
Right.
Like the, um, um, finance kind of discussion, something else. So, um, I think, if you look at your calendars, you're probably getting an email from him soon, trying to work out another time, if you wanna tack it onto this or have a separate meeting, are you thinking about those kind of things?
And this would need to, to happen outside of the regular work session schedule.
They're both down.
Okay.
I think we need to have the chamber meeting probably by itself, too.
Jeff, on the, the dune management plan, I guess, I thought of having it a way, how to manual. My question is, I see no requirement for that to be submitted to the state as a formal board of management plan. And my concern with that is, if we do have to do that, which again, curmudgeons over and over, then we've gotta, we're locked into something that won't be as flexible as we might like to have it, as science changes, our experience with monitoring programs change, we might like to make some adjustments, without, without having to go back and get some formal approval of the state to do that. That's, that's been...
Okay.
My bigger objections.
Okay.
You mean, that would it be more on the level of a comp plan change? Is that your, your fear?
Yeah, but, if you, if, if, the grading review is very clear, you gotta send it in, maybe...
No, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I agree with that.
Even if we're not gonna do all that, and we send it in, unnecessarily, the review, it's just more bureaucracy, not just...
Yeah, okay.
That'd be a...
Or at least find out if that's really the case.
Right.
So what is the flexibility that we have to change that document? And perhaps if we were to write in, you know, not in annual review, but in the two-to-five year period that we have been reviewing it. Is that what you're referring to, Sam, that you'd like to be able to change that document?
Probably, I, it, it's, it's a plan, so I think, yeah, it needs to be flexible enough that, uh, the times change.
Well, we're doing what we're doing now, for that very reason.
We're still bound by global teams, got, you know, comprehensive...
But if we make, if we make changes in this plan, in the foredune plan, management plan, then do we, we have, we still have to go back and make changes in the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, right?
Well, that's the whole thing. I think, uh, if, if it's drafted as more of a user's manual, is what you're, what you all are talking about, I don't think you'd have to do that, if, uh, 'cause if you don't, you know, if you give, here's, here's, for instance, like the vegetation, if things change, you know, and there's one that's winning, you know, this is the best management of erosion or stabilization or whatever, then you can give those different practices, whether it's woody debris or whatever, the latest findings on these different things, but doesn't mean that has to ever get into comprehensive plan language or, um, uh, your zoning ordinance. In other words, those are just different tools somebody could use to then go before your planning commission to get their conditional use permit, I'm gonna use this tool, 'cause I think this helps us best in this situation. That's the way I see it.
Okay, then, enough of that. Anything for a good of the order? Brandon?
Colleen, do we have the fire department scheduled to meet with us either on our...
Twelfth, isn't it?
Bruce was saying this morning to me that, um, that we're gonna try and put it on the work session, it looks like they're gonna have two of their members come and give a presentation, wouldn't it be board, board kind of thing, you know, council to their board, if they're full board, or it would just be a couple of representatives to present?
And that's fine with me. I, I spoke with a board member, and I just wanted to, to get back to them.
He's looking at the twelfth, November twelfth. That's just as of this morning, so I don't know, if they, nothing like that has been actually confirmed back to them that I know, yeah.
Okay, I just, in light of what was sent to us about, you know, now it doesn't seem as, as lucrative to, to do this, but I'm still, would like to speak with the board, and I just wanted to make sure you all felt the same way.
Sure, if they wanna speak to us, they'd be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, good of the order? Okay, we are our turn. Thank you.